July 26th, regular board session.
Very good. Thank you, Jake. We'll call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Go call Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCollum?
Here.
Very good. What entertain a motion on this morning's agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
One second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, very good. Jake, any communications received?
Not to my ears, no.
Okay. Supervisors, any communications received?
I didn't receive anything.
No.
Okay, and none from me? Move on. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Just looking. Nothing here. Anything online?
Nothing online.
All right, we'll move on. Is there a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Hey, I have a comment on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Just to make you both aware. It was on page 26, plain in regards to the community society.
Yep.
I got maybe aware of, we haven't had a visit with them recently, but also I asked Ed, I emailed Ed, and asked him to do a review of the contract to make sure we're compliant with the state code of nonprofits. You remember a while back, we had some communication about state auditors and how we give money to the nonprofits, just making sure we're compliant.
Was there, is that, is he doing that research right now, Keisha, or?
I haven't heard back from him. I just wanted to let you both know. I don't have a problem approving this. I did speak with Jake about it, but I do think it's something we probably need to revisit, just to make sure we're compliant.
Okay, very good. Jake, would you make that?
Yes, Ed emailed me last night asking for the, so I sent him the latest signed version of the agreement, so he is, will be in process.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Keisha.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good. And Jake, you've got a note on that. Very good, thank you. All right, on to business. First item is a receive and file Marion County Sheriff's quarterly and fiscal year-end report for the year end 2022. All right. Welcome this morning. Can you come up with it, or are you good?
Well, if they ask me something.
All right, I'll come up with it. There we go, that's right, that's right. All right.
So, just didn't know if you guys had any questions on the reports that I submitted to you guys. Paper service and the civil office has went up since the last fiscal year. Just with COVID and stuff previously, people weren't giving us papers to serve or garnishments or sheriff sales or stuff like that, so. But yeah, we have seen an increase a little bit of our service fees on that, so.
What about, I think during the budget meetings, we talked about the number of folks we had in the jail and contracts with our, for jail funds from other counties.
Like in the housing.
Yeah, how are we doing with that?
That was really good. So, the fiscal year, we brought in about $357,000 compared to, the year before was about $160,000, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jason?
So I can add to that.
Yeah.
Great year that we've just had. Don't expect it from July 1st moving forward now.
What drove this, Sheriff? Because this is a little bit of an anomaly.
Pope County, Warren County.
Okay.
So normally we hold for Pope County, or for Warren County. This year, we increased it also with Pope County. We're going to keep the contract, obviously, with Pope County going moving forward, but Warren County has a new facility.
Okay.
So, I mean, in the next month or two here, you're going to see, I mean, Warren County's not going to need us like they have for the last 10 to 12 years.
Okay.
I mean, on different things, but we're still going to hold for Pope County on it, but just starting now through June 30th. I mean, it probably isn't going to reach that $357,000.
So we should expect this to go back to normal, what it's been traditionally. Okay, very good.
And we'll, like I said, we'll still, I mean, house and try to keep those numbers up, but just so you're aware of it.
I appreciate that, Jason, thank you. Steve, Keisha, any questions on the sheriff's report?
I have a couple of questions. Hey, Jason, in regards to the trust fund, can you explain what is that? I think I ask that every year, but I need to just clarify on that.
Our trust?
The trust fund.
So that is our garnishment money. That's like when we have garnishments, like with, say, Pellicore Premier or any of those places, we hold that money in our trust. And then when the garnishment has expired, or we collected all that money, then I write the check to the court board, so.
So it's not, it's really a cash and cash out fund? It's not anything that adds to operating budget or anything like that? Good question.
The other thing, yeah, no, the other thing was, is, you know, I was just going to ask, you know, I saw that increase on inmates, and I just wondered if we'd ever done like a cost analysis. What it costs us versus, you know, do we have problems with housing extra? Do they send us maybe more of the problematic people? I mean, do you get what I'm asking? When I say what we do, have we ever looked at, you know, the cost analysis on that aspect of it?
Sure. Are we being anti-selected against?
No, it's been factless for us. I mean, I tell Sheriff Carrick over from Warren County every time I see him, they pretty much paid for our facility. What I mean by that is guaranteed payment. When we house for someone from another county, whether it be Pope County or Warren County, we're always getting paid for that, I mean, housing fees and the food aspect of it. So when we bring in John Doe Citizen, there's no guaranteed payment. So, I mean, it's not something that, I mean, we have to bring in John Doe Citizen. That's ultimately our responsibility is to house those people here in Marion County for it. But when we house from other entities, we're getting paid.
I think.
And that's, yeah, so we don't have to worry about not collecting, whereas when we house in our own local inmates, just the collection aspect of it, I mean, is hard, so.
Let me, Jason, just let me hone in. Keisha, I think what you're asking is, does the payment from, let's say, Pope County cover the cost of the person being housed?
Most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Keisha, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, and I just didn't know if it was more destruction when those coming in, if they were more destructive to the jail or anything like that on the maintenance side of things.
Yeah, no, that's, this actually, this is a great chance that when we do these quarterly reports, two things. One, Jenny, Jen, and Chad up in the civil office do a fabulous job, but also to your question, the jailers, I mean, do a fabulous job on it. Whether it's a Pope County inmate, a Warren County inmate, yeah, there's times that they may want to try to give you a problem child on it, but we have a great working relationship with them, and they understand. You don't do that very often, or we just refuse to take the prisoners.
Sure.
And then it comes back around, so they're very, I mean, respectful on that side of it. And also too, just even with our relationship with Pope County, Pope County has a lot more, what's the word I want to use? Their medical staff at the Pope County Jail, they have more hands on deck, let's say. I mean, whether it be nursing, doctors, different things. So if there is something that if we have an issue with an inmate that has some medical issues or different things, they've been very receptive to helping us on the block side of it too. So if it's something that they, they obviously, I mean, have a lot larger facility, a lot more staff, a lot of different things. So it's a good working relationship that we have all around the Pope County, Warren County, and even the other counties that we work for.
Excellent. Very good. Keisha?
Thank you, Jason. Nope. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate your explanation.
Steve?
Yeah, if we hold for another agency, Jason, do we get reimbursed for that?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, we get reimbursed at each time, and it may be something, let's say we have a conflict of interest. For an example, one of my employee's family members gets arrested. Well, we'll hold for, let's say, Mahaska County. If they have the same incident, they'll hold for us. So then there's no conflict of interest with us holding somebody along those lines. So whether it be a monetary or just a day-for-day type swap.
Right.
Yeah, it's a very good working relationship on it. We've held for other counties in situations like that, and we've had to have them hold for us.
Okay.
Going really well.
Very good. Well, thank you. So the, just my one takeaway, for me anyway, is that this 355 is going to go back?
Yeah.
To more.
We're still going to hold for Pope County, but I just can't guarantee, I mean, that payment, you know, so, so just if it fluctuates, you know what.
Sure. So maybe Jake, we just make a note of that, just so when it comes up again, we don't look at that and go, well, Jason, why does this go down?
Right. And it is something too, as Warren County space opens up, I mean, hopefully we can hold a few more Pope also, so.
Okay.
There's just no guarantee on that market aspect of it, you know, I mean, you have to be fluid in how it goes because numbers go up and down. All of a sudden, if Pope County says, hey, we're down below 1,000 inmates, they're not going to need to house prisoners in other areas.
Right.
So we just have to be aware.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any additional questions?
I don't have anything.
Steve?
I have none.
Very good. This is a receive and file, so is there a motion to do so?
Make motion to receive and file.
Second?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good. Thank you.
We're going to take off then if you don't need us for.
Thank you. We're good, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right, we'll declare the public hearing open. We have a proposed disposition of county property. You can see the description up on the board and online without having to read through the entire paragraph. This is our discussion in the town of Hamilton. We've been having for several meetings.
Yeah, this is just the next step.
Yep. Who is Missy? Who's running, running her, is this Missy?
I know this is probably through me.
Okay.
Actually Ross is the one that's prepared the notice and the documents if you guys want to move forward at some point. The Rihanna Frost is the one that has been acquiring and pursuing this for a few months now. She's the individual that is interested in the parcel and has made the offer for you guys, so.
This is, this is the opportunity for the public to object or comment on the offer or the disposition. Are there any public comments on said disposition?
Only comment is Missy said that Michaela brought this forward.
Okay.
This was the one that Michaela brought.
Ah, very good, thank you. Seeing no public comments. Anything online? Nope. All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
One second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Very good. Thank you. So Jake, we'll have this, what, in our next meeting then?
Yeah, we'll just, unless, unless, otherwise, we'll talk to Ross and just keep the process moving down the path.
All right, very good. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2022-67, which is Highway G76. Tyler, I think the next, the rest of the agenda might be you. I don't know.
Not quite, but.
Okay, all right.
Aye.
So, when we talked at budget time and through our five-year program earlier this year, one of the things we discussed was because of constraints in the, in potential funding shortfalls and constraints in project funding, we wouldn't pursue grants or safety funding that couldn't be 100% funded, you know, because we need those farm-to-market dollars or local dollars for, for other projects to keep up on our road system. So we wouldn't pursue these safety grants, which typically are implementation of a new, a new systematic brick-and-mortar type improvement to the road, whether that's shoulders or guard rail or something like that. So we wouldn't add any infrastructure with our own dollars, but only with projects that can be funded 100% of safety. So in this particular instance, we had three projects in mind. So moving forward, we looked at which ones could we do within the $500,000 cap of T-SIP funds, and a couple came to light, one of which, we'll talk about in the next item. But this one in particular, we had two fatalities on in one particular accident, actually. So it was eligible as far as the cost benefit analysis that we had to perform in order to be eligible for the project through the T-SIP program. So we have ran that, and the estimate comes in just over $500,000, but I think we're being really conservative there with the uncertainties in the construction material prices right now. So I do believe the project will come in under $500,000 for this. And it would be paving shoulders, widening shoulders, and flattening the four slopes of Highway G76 west of 103rd Avenue to a location approximately 800 feet west of the English Creek Bridge. So if you're in the proximity of the English Creek Speedway, it would be from there through the two curves to the east. And we contained the project just to the two curves because we didn't want to match with any local or farm-to-market dollars, but also because that's where our crash history is because of that horizontal alignment of the roadway there. This project will require some work outside of the driveway. I have had those discussions with the property owners, just kind of an FYI to them and to gauge their willingness. All were willing to do a temporary construction easement or something of that sort. One of the properties is for sale, but all of that will be revisited with them in January if these funds are awarded, and funds would not be available until July 1 of next year. So, so I did not do anything further with them other than gauge their interest in participating, we'll win it if the time comes.
Very good. Questions for Tyler on this proposal, resolution?
And this is a change from previous T-SIP applications. Normally, we would not have a resolution until after awards are awarded. The new requirements are to have your support by a resolution prior to making application, which they are due August 15th.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Tyler. I wondered on that, why, why we have a resolution before awards, so. Otherwise, I don't have any further questions.
Steve?
Nope, I have none. Thank you.
Very good. Tyler, thank you. Is there a motion on this resolution?
I move to, yeah, Resolution 2022-67.
One second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good. 2022-68 is Highway T15 Traffic Safety Improvement Program. Tyler?
So through the T-SIP program, we are eligible to receive multiple awards in the same fiscal year, totally no more than $1 million to one, any particular entity. I look back through the history, counties and cities have been awarded multiple grants in the same fiscal year previously, and we do feel that, well, right now, two applications are warranted. And this one in particular, because we are looking at doing a T15 pavement rehabilitation project using largely farm-to-market dollars between Knoxville and Pellicore. But if we can couple that with T-SIP dollars, it'll save us on our farm-to-market, save some money in our farm-to-market if we can utilize T-SIP dollars to do what we had planned on doing anyway, which is to pave shoulders and add rumble strips on what we locally call Crispin Corner or the intersection of T15 and Highway G71. We have had a fatality there in the last five years as well, and we have an extremely high number of runoff road crashes at this particular location.
Right. So this one, you've got a 365?
Yeah, this one will simply be shoulder paving. You do not have to widen or flatten four slopes because they already meet the specifications that we're going for on Highway G76.
Okay. Very good. Questions?
Are you, but is, we're looking at number four, does it add, say, add rumble strips? Am I misreading that?
Yes.
Yeah, that says that, Keisha.
Shoulder paving and.
Okay. And rumble strips. So where are you putting those at? I'm just thinking of where, because you know, there's houses right there on that corner. Are they going to hear those constantly? Are we looking at, I want to make sure I understand where's that?
So Crispin Corner.
Turnoff to White.
Okay.
What?
Okay.
So where you, where you return to go to White Rush Campground. Yes, transverse rumble strips is something we had considered on numerous occasions. We've had previous discussions. We actually almost did them two years ago as part of our G46 project in this particular location. We do have transverse rumble strips in the main subcurbs at three other locations around the county, and surprisingly, they do very, very well in preventing runoff road crashes when you compare them to curbs throughout the county that do not have them.
Okay. I was just thinking of noise. How loud, how loud will they be? Will they be like the normal?
They will be normal, I mean, to any transverse rumble strip approaching a stop sign. And that's.
Because Crispin Corner, that house is right in the right of way. Your house?
Yeah, and actually, the rumble strips would be well in advance of that home, because that is in the corner.
The corner, okay.
The dis- rumble strips will be in advance of that. And full disclosure, that is something we are considering, and I haven't made the decision for sure as to whether we're going to do that. Because we may implement other safety measures as part of the T15 project as a whole, which then would change that direction here. The other difference here would be centerline rumbles, because we do have cross-centerline and runoff road left crashes here as well, and not just runoff road right crashes. We have implemented centerline rumbles only in one other curve throughout the county, but they are commonplace on most state highways, anyone.
I would really consider, I think we're going to have some pushback, but I know, I know Mrs. Crispin, and I would be surprised if that's going to cause that constant noise all the time. That she's probably going to be contacting, contacting us, so, yeah, I just trying to make sure we have safety, but also not have constant complaints either.
Yep, we can look at that for a look.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tyler.
All right, any other discussion? Steve?
No.
All right, is there a motion on this resolution?
I move we, I move we approve Resolution 2022-68, so we can be in line for the funds.
One second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good. 2022-70, this is participation in Safe Streets and All Roads Grant, another grant. Tyler?
So, after putting this on the agenda, this issue has become a little bit more complicated. Steve and I had some discussions yesterday about it. So last Thursday, we met, let me, let me set the agenda item up first, I guess. So, the item presented here in the resolution is for Marion County to participate in a joint application through the County Engineers Association and the Iowa DOT's Traffic and Safety Bureau to apply for a SS4A grant for an action plan. So the counties across the state are jointly applying to receive funds to put together action plans for each participating county. We currently have what we call a local road safety plan that we got a grant for a number of years ago, I think it was 2015 or 16. However, that does not meet the requirements of the federal funding, but because we have that, Marion County and other counties that have a local road safety plan, well, their process, their action plan will cost less because it will be just modifying that plan and including the requirements of the federal funding.
To preface that, we have to have the safety plan in place to be even eligible for any federal, featured federal funds.
Right. So to go after the safe streets and roads for all implementation grants, which we don't go the full extent of yet, we have to have this action plan. And through this resolu-, this resolution and the County Engineers Association, it would be at no cost to the participating counties. The match, local match dollars would come through the DOT's funding program, H-SIP Secondary. So funds that we typically would use throughout the county for pavement markings or guard rail, they are going to take a cut off the top to pay for the local match. And then SS4A would cover the remaining cost to put the action plans together. So that's what was originally presented through this agenda item, but on Thursday, CIRCA, our RPA 11, that Marion County is a member of, posed to the members at the meeting that they'd like to apply for an SS4A grant to get action plans for all members and non-members within the region. So that would include any cities such as Meltzer Dallas and Pleasantville that are within the region but are not members of CIRCA. So there was quite a bit of discussion surrounding that and quite a bit of discussion following, and I actually received two phone calls about it this morning. The counties all are in agreement that we would like to proceed with this and making a joint application with the Service Bureau and the other counties throughout Iowa. The cities expressed concern that if we, as the counties, did not participate in the RPA's application, it might hinder their ability to receive the grant or may be seen as competing. And there's a lot of language in SS4A about duplicative efforts, so what we do not want to do is apply, put our name on both through the RPA and through the Iowa County Engineers Association. There's been a lot of stress on that as far as duplicative efforts. If we apply through the County Engineers Association, my understanding is some of the smaller cities, it's unclear if Meltzer Dallas and Pleasantville, with their populations, would be eligible for this. But definitely the Bussy, Swan, Marysville-sized towns would be eligible for, to use our action plan as their own because the county applied. So similar to the farm-to-market routes in those less than 500 population towns, we take care of as the county, it would be similar here. Our action plan would cover them in the instance that they wanted to apply for implementation grant dollars. It's unclear at this point whether that includes Meltzer or Pleasantville, but it's fairly, fairly certain it does not include the larger cities that typically would receive their own grants or own dollars through the RPA's. So with all that said, my recommendation, which is not, again, not in this original agenda item, would be to proceed with the Iowa County Engineers Association grant as presented to, because for one, it is at no cost. If we went through the RPA, there's discussion that maybe a portion of the local match could be covered elsewhere, but a portion would have to come from each entity. But also because anything that we do through the County Engineers Association is very much tailored to the counties and our needs and our interests, and our safety needs and interests are going to vary from that of the cities, and that, if we apply together, pedestrians and traffic signals are much different than runoff road crashes and high-speed roadway issues that we see on my Pacifics. So that, my recommendation would be to proceed with this. This, again, is simply to get the action plan done. It does not guarantee any future funding for implementation of any safety projects, but what it could do is it will set, allow us to apply for implementation dollars. Not saying we will or won't in the future, but it could be used for such things as durable pavement markings, rumble strips, pavement white, guard rails, flashing vehicles intersections, which we have done some. So things we would likely look at in the future may become eligible through the implementation dollars once we have the action plan in place. So things we would likely look at in the future may become eligible through the implementation dollars once we have the action plan in place.
Yeah, after, after my visit with Tyler yesterday, I'm in total agreement with his assessment. I think, I think it's, it would be who of us as a county to, to move forward with this, because there is a time crunch.
Yes.
And, you know, you know, to me, the cities can, you know, they need to fight that battle out with themselves.
And there is, and I asked the question last Thursday, sort of mean, there is nothing preventing the cities and the RPA. As, CIRCA as putting a joint application together for just the member cities. They can still do that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any issue, guys, if you, if you both recommend going with the, with your county engineer group, Tyler. My, my question, and either one of you can answer this, is when you put together a plan like this. Fourth whereas. How, how do we do that? I mean, how do you have a, a plan that gets to zero fatalities? To me, that sounds impossible to achieve.
So there are some folks at the DOT, they probably do a much better job explaining this than I, but.
I mean, it's the government, and I get it, Tyler, there's all kinds of people up there that, you know, they think that, they, they think differently than we do in the real world.
Yep.
But if you develop a plan that has this type of goal, there's probably going to be metrics assigned to it. To determine whether you are on track to get to that goal.
Uh, I don't know that I.
Or is it just, is it just language that they're throwing out there to say that, yeah, we'll have no gas engines by twenty thirty?
So I don't know that I included it in what I sent you, but there, there was some discussion about that amongst the county engineers. That, you know, goal zero and having that deadline for that is a very daunting task. For one, to hit zero and two, to set a deadline for it. So as part of this app, you can put together the plan to have other milestones towards that goal. Such as reducing the number of a certain type of crash by this date or by a certain percentage. All of that is subjective to traffic volume increases and vehicle miles traveled and that sort of thing. But also, I don't know if I totally answered your question here, but the. Grant, we did ask. The FHWA to put the notice of funding opportunity out that if we were going to be held to any of those.
Okay.
Metrics.
Right.
Uh, which they said, no. The plan is a plan to work towards, but we would not be held to any of those.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, Tyler and I both kicked that around yesterday. And, but like he said, I, I don't believe they're going to hold us to that.
So if they give us dollars between now and twenty fifty, let's say, and we don't get to zero, they can't take them back? Because you didn't hit the goal.
That is my understanding.
That is my understanding also.
Okay.
Now, will that change in twenty years? I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, we're committing future boards. And unlike, and unlike what the Supreme Court just decided, which future boards can say on a twenty eighty, we don't want to do this anymore. I don't know where this would fall, so let's, let's say for the sake of argument, you don't hit the goals. We've already received a certain amount of grant money that's, that's for certain projects. And all of a sudden, whoever's running DOT at the time or the federal Transportation Department. Is, I gotta be careful here. Let's say they don't know what they're doing, similar to what they don't know what they're doing right now, and they decide to come back and take the money from county, you didn't achieve your goal. You promised zero, you're not at zero. And you commit future boards to zero. Will they get an opportunity to say, well, wait a minute, we don't want to do this anymore because it's clear we can't get there unless we're going to drive people's cars for them?
Well, I, I would say that. If, if you're talking about the future, I would say that. Obviously, it's, it's all project driven, so I, you would have to look at the project and you're going to apply for a grant for.
Let me ask you a different way, Steve. Have you ever seen a grant structured with this kind of language? Where you have to get, where you, where you commit future boards to a zero goal?
I have not.
Okay. I just want to get that out there, that it, it sounds like, you know, the same kind of language is put into a lot of federal programs. It doesn't matter whether you're an ag or whatever, they put this kind of language in to drive local folks to say, well, our, our political goal is zero. And we want to make the roads perfectly safe and then we'll never have an accident again and we'll never have carbon, we'll all be carbon neutral. We know that's not true, okay? And if that's what it is, I can live with it because future boards won't have to deal with that type of federal government overreach to say, well, you didn't hit it, you get, you give the money back. Or you get a penalty. But if we don't think that, then we probably need to think about it a little bit, right? And say, we're saying to future boards, you may have a two hundred thousand dollar road project you got a grant for, and they're going to come back and say, well, but your statistics aren't what we like.
I think all we're trying to accomplish here is, is to get this action, this plan.
You want to get in the, you want to get in the stream.
Plays, I think, and if you want to apply for the grant, I think that's when you're really gonna have to start to ask those questions.
Okay, so this get, this gets you in place.
But the plan does establish those milestones.
Yeah, so once, once you get it, once you do this, you're, you're set, you're committed. Now you're just debating over the type of grant.
But, but to Steve's point, if you don't.
We just won't apply for the grant if we don't think we can make that goal.
Okay, I just, so maybe, maybe it's this, Tyler, it's as simple as this. We, we go ahead and get into the, into the queue. For the grant money, but as we learn more about the program. We keep us updated so we know what's going on.
Yeah, if they're, if they're gonna tell me in the future that I gotta meet a zero goal or I'm gonna, or we're gonna ask this money back, I say, well, for future money.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's kind of how we have to approach it. You, you, makes sense, Steve?
Yeah, it makes perfect sense to me.
Tyler?
Yep. And to answer your question, no, I've never seen one structured like this either. But goal zero has been a goal of the Iowa DOT for a number of years, there are zero fatalities.
It's a notable goal, probably not achievable.
What, we all.
And we're still at four hundred plus fatalities per year in Iowa, and I don't know that the number has actually increased by much.
I don't know how, yeah.
I mean, you can make all the safety improvements you want to to a road, if somebody's not paying attention, something's gonna happen.
Right.
But.
Yeah. All right, as long as we, Keisha, you have questions on this?
No, I get what you're saying, Mark, and that does throw a red light for me too. So, I mean, just, we're just doing the resolution, but then later on, depending on what that application for the grant actually is. Then yeah, I guess maybe we should further discuss, but I don't have a problem just with the resolution.
Yeah, all right, no, Tyler, appreciate the discussion.
And if it makes you feel any more comfortable, we asked a similar question. When we did our local road safety plan. Cause it made recommendations about specific safety improvements at specific locations, specific curves, specific intersections. If we were going to be in any way held to any of that.
Right.
That was state dollars, so that made a difference there, but we were not. And there was specific language to that effect, part of that program.
Okay, no, I appreciate it, Tyler, thank you. Very good. Then with that, we entertain a motion on this resolution.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two day seventy. McCollum?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you, good discussion, appreciate the indulgence on my lack of trust.
And one more.
One more for Tyler, all right.
Jake says two.
Twenty twenty-two dash seventy-one, federal aid agreements, another federal aid agreement, so all right.
Fairly standard agreement here, however, we have not seen one in probably three years because through federal aid swap, we went to swap agreements versus federal aid. Now with the IHAA, we are now back to using federal dollars for STBG and Iowa Bridge Program Funds. So this is a STBG federal aid agreement for the pavement rehabilitation of Highway G seventy-one. It could be from Highway five into the town of Bussy. And we did a fairly detailed analysis as we do every few years on which pavements to prioritize as far as overlay and pavement rehabilitation. And with our dollars being more limited or the bank for buck that we can get out of each dollar. We changed our five-year program quite a bit, as you know, and. I determined that G seventy-one was a project we needed to do sooner than later. We have lots of other major corridors that need, are at or beyond their useful life. But G seventy-one has seen some fairly significant deterioration when you get out there and start walking around looking at the centerline and the edge line and. The cracking, so we'll be doing patching, overlay and. Some minor safety improvements at a couple of locations that we typically have. Associated with the curve north of Bussy where we drop, have people dropping a tire off edge of a road there. So, pretty standard agreement, pretty standard project. We haven't gotten a lot of questions as we've been out there surveying and doing different things about, oh, this was, we just overlaid this not that long ago. That is actually true. This was overlaid as part of a federal stimulus project in two thousand nine. So typical overlay will last about fifteen years. Industry rule of thumb is five years for every inch of overlay. And you don't do an overlay of less than an inch and a half. With federal dollars. We did quite a few one-inch overlays in two thousand nine. So a one-inch overlay was placed on G seventy-one, so it is well beyond its useful life being done in two thousand nine. So yes, it was done fairly recently and we have other roads out there that haven't been overlaid since the early two thousands, early nineties. But like I said, a one-inch overlay was not designed to last this long and it is definitely showing. And that's my assessment and my recommendation for this project and I recommend approval of this agreement.
Very good, appreciate it, Tyler. Questions for Tyler on this, Steve?
I know, and you brought up the swap program, you know. When that, when that came into, into play, you know, Tyler and I both thought, boy, it finally did something that makes sense. And apparently it must have made too much sense because they went away from it.
A lot of the cap stays in the Midwest, we're into swap programs. That's being retracted now. We are, because it's federal aid, we still have to match with local farm to market dollars, twenty percent. We are supposed to be getting through the transportation bill a swap to farm to market to cover the match. We have not yet started receiving that, but. They say that is coming, tend to what effect or what dollar, I don't know, I do not know yet.
Okay, very good. Keisha, any questions for Tyler?
No, and then Tyler, rest your heart, this is like a public key. There's as much as you guys have to do, what, what matches what, and you know, I'm like, oh, it smokes, I don't know how you keep it all straight.
Sometimes I don't.
No, I appreciate you willing to be able to do it. And we can find the twenty percent, you said twenty percent, correct, match?
Twenty percent, it's currently being shown our program as farm to market dollars, but hopefully our farm to market account sees a boost from the. Swap that they're proposing. And to your point, Scott and Jay and I, we just have to ask each other, okay, so what are we doing here now, you know, what funding sources is it? That changes how we do construction inspection and how we do project development. And it's just, we're doing one of each right now, we have about three different types of projects being designed in the office right now and it is kind of a, a jet lag.
Yeah, it gets kind of confusing, it's kind of like FEMA, the rules change from day to day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes me appreciate, you know, your office more and more, you and your staff, so thank you for that, I don't have any further questions.
Very good, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I don't make motion to approve resolution, sorry, I want to make sure I'm on the right one.
Twenty twenty-two seventy-one.
Twenty twenty-two dash seventy-one.
Second? Rainey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two dash seventy-two, Tyler, this is it, this is the grand finale for you.
Yeah, I believe Jake put this on the agenda, but this is the. Formal appropriation of dollars being transferred to the secondary.
We do this every year.
Yeah, thanks, Tyler. Yeah, so this is a, just administrative again, to actually allow the treasurer to transfer funds from one to another. So during budget process, we, we've talked about this many times throughout the year, this is the main local dollar funding for Tyler's road department. And so the Marion County has historically transported the most that's allowed. From the Road Services Fund, which is collected in the, in the unincorporated areas only, to the road department, the fund's money for his operations. And. We generally do it, so we will set the maximum that can be transferred by law, it's already in the approved budget. Our process generally is to only do it upon taxes being collected, so we wouldn't transfer more from the fund than is actually collected.
Correct.
So, once taxes are starting to be collected in August, because we don't collect in July, then every month we do a calculation. And the treasurer's office transfers from one to the other to make sure that we don't exceed. So we don't come back to you every month to do it, this is a not to exceed number.
Yep, very good. It's in the budget, it's what we talked about, so shouldn't be a lot of questions. Keisha, any questions, Steve?
No.
No.
Very good, is there a motion to approve this resolution, twenty twenty-two dash seventy-two?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two day seventy-two.
I'll second that. Thanks, Tyler.
McCollum?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye, very good, thank you. Mr. Nestebi, VA, we got some updates and fire away.
This is the last time I will be doing this.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, that sounds like a pretty definitive pronouncement here.
Hey, we are done. The board approved of the change orders today and so this, this is a very short presentation.
All right.
I've got some old photos, I've got some new photos, finished, I've got some numbers on one slide and then. Really the whole purpose when we talk about change orders is. We had talked early on in the, the project as project manager on it of just getting the project done. We regrouped as we did at the courthouse at the end for the official approval of the change orders for the things. You're all aware of the change orders we have, but this is the official approval of those change orders as well, so. Yeah, there you go, slides are moving by pretty quick, but if you had a chance to see the first picture, want to go back to that one, Renee, just for a second? Because I forgot what it looked like out there. Prior to, because incrementally, I got to see this change on a daily basis, so putting that one in there, I was like, wow, this was, this was kind of neat. So go ahead, Renee, you can move to the next, there's the south side, officers' quarters, old nurses' quarters. And everything else, I think there's four or five more of finished product after Light had pulled off campus. So there's looking to the west. There's an eastern view. South. Can see Park Lane. Yep. And there it is.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
Yep.
Renee, if you want to go to the number slide, we can wrap this up. So just a, a one quick snippet. So originally, as the board's aware, we had a projec- a project estimate of eleven million. And a one-year contract completion deadline set. We initially had signed a change order for Light to be extended thirty days, we obviously didn't need to use that. Simple expenses, soil compaction testing, we had an additional, these are additional numbers. Simple expenses, soil compaction testing, we had an additional, these are additional numbers. $1572.04, so very small amount for the compaction testing. That gave us the ability to hand this off to a developer with knowing full well that the ground is stable, that we've done everything we could for layer compaction. We did one-foot lifts on every hole on the campus and then have the requisite testing to show our compaction was proper. We had an additional asbestos abatement of $43,222.76. So that is asbestos that was hidden in walls, hidden in between layers of brick. Also, the asbestos that had to be removed from the boiler plant upon it being demoed. So that, some of that additional cost is directly represented in the fact that the board approved for the boiler plant to come down, and that originally wasn't part of it. Landfill charges, we actually came up pretty good considering all the extra stuff. Our original estimate was $3.5 million in landfill charges. We ended up at $3,679,000 and some change. Now that, actually, we would have come in far better on that if we didn't find almost $800,000 of a duck bank to be disposed of. So at the end of the day, $179,000 and some change over what our initial estimate was. Change orders, this does include the boiler plant demo, $350,772. And that also includes that $18,000 credit from Byte that the board approved the sale of generators back in August of last year. So that $18,000 is in that number. Our original Byte contract was $6,728,301 for their portion total. So they came in at $7,028,000, this where Byte came in. VA demo total of $10,803,000. The nice thing is, we also approved the sale of some electrical equipment. And actually, that check did come today, Jay, I went and checked the mailbox. So I've got that to hand to you as well. So that $50,000 check from Emsco has arrived. And that takes our total project cost to $10,753,650.09. In 10 months and 17 days.
That's excellent. Jake, we had this on the next slide, Chris, where you've got our original bonding and...
I do not have any bonding slides.
Jake, when we, when we issued our bonds, we did $11.1 million?
Yep, $11 million, yep.
And minus the origination costs and those things? What was our bond total from that as far as supporting the project?
Proceeds to use was $10,300,000. And that was because of the wraparound on the levying and not having to levy for two years to maintain the levy. Debt service levy until the LDC was gone. So we had $10,300,000 from the bonds, so the general fund just picked up the difference.
So, so yeah, $453,000 we took out of the general fund. And as far as funding in the, in the general fund, we're still sitting in a very good position?
At June 30-year-end, the general fund is in a solid position.
Okay, very good. Very good. Well, Chris, we'll have time for discussion. It's the questions here from the board. But just my compliments to you managing this project, the $10 million, $11 million project and bringing it in that close to being on budget does not happen in government. So my thanks for how you handled this and did it in this kind of a way for our taxpayers. We don't often get projects that come this close to our estimates. So, well done. Very well done.
Yes, I want to echo that also, Chris. I think you did a fabulous job, especially all the unknowns that we come across out there. And we kind of knew that going into that, there was a lot of stuff we could not see. And I think, I think it coming in under our, our project estimate, original estimate speaks well to everybody involved.
I think it's a really good point for the public to understand that there's, there's a direct reason that we came in at budget or below. We didn't fly into this blindly. The board was willing to spend money upfront. You know, we had early discussions about, let's get out and survey it. Let's get out, we had garden associates go out and actually survey the infrastructure that we could see. We had extensive asbestos testing done. So when we presented the contractor, with the opportunity to bid this project, we presented them as many of the variables ahead of time. So part of it is the fact that we, as a county, were willing to spend some money upfront to make sure that we had the best information available. We didn't fly blindly in this project. Every step of the way, we were thinking about end goal. So my hat's off to you guys as well.
Well, I appreciate it.
I can't remember all the numbers, Chris, but I think in our other estimates that we received from other companies was well above that $11 million estimate.
Yeah, our, our original budget pricing, prior to us even having a tested for asbestos, was between $15 and $20 million. And that was through a Iowa contractor. They're about the fourth largest contractor for specialty contracting in the nation. Actually did the original budget pricing on this.
Yeah, I think, I think the process...
$17.4 million was what they came in at just for the demolition.
I think what you said speaks to it all. The process that we took to, to get to the awarding of the contracts paid off in the end.
Paid off in a big way.
They did, they did. That's excellent.
I have a couple of questions. Chris, thank you for presenting this. And this can go actually to Jake. So he went back and said, you know, we originally had the $10.3 because of what you think. Explain that to me again. It's because the bonding, is there fees upfront? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So to issue the bonds, almost like $220,000, which is just a standard percentage rate, just for cost of issuing the bonds for all the different attorneys, financial advisors, all those types of things. And then the difference from that, $11 million minus that $220,000, to the $10.3 was deposited directly into the debt service fund and sits there and has been made an interest payment and is paying the interest. We're paying interest only, like I think it's two more years.
Two more years.
Until the local, until the law enforcement center bonds are paid off. And that was, the board, when they issued the bonds, did that to not increase the debt service fund to the taxpayers and do kind of a wraparound and hold that payment coming off until the law enforcement was done. So it would be an even keel on the county's debt service to the taxpayer. So that's, so we, we received the money, but are using it as direct to pay the interest. It was not the number of other project.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just want to clarify, make sure I understand, to the $450,000 roughly is what we're looking at? And we would take, that would just come out of Fund 99?
It's the general fund, it'd be Fund 1, but Department 99, yes.
Okay.
So the expenses that Chris was talking about, the prep expenses are the same way. They were just taken from that. And then I believe that when the documents were written up, when you guys initially started this project, if, if and when this development takes place, those should all be eligible for reimbursement at some point through the TIF increment districts and stuff that are created through the city. So ultimately, the goal would be to get all that back through that financing district.
Okay, all right. No, I appreciate that. I just, A, I wanted to make sure that, so that I fully understand. And so if people ask, you know, where is the money? You know, that was the money that we're going above and beyond, going and getting bonding, the money that we have in the general fund to pay the difference. So, yeah.
Yeah, we effectively used the savings account.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Appreciate the way you said that. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris on this? Steve?
No, thanks again. Job well done.
You're good.
Yes, like I guess the final thing I need from the board is, you've already approved the Emsco sale of electrical equipment. You've already approved the Byte generator sale earlier in the year. Just an official approval over the eight change orders, eight official change orders that we had on the project.
And this will conclude our relationship with Byte?
That is correct. They are packed up and on their way. I submitted last payment to them on last, last Monday.
Very good. Very good. Is there a motion to approve the change orders that Chris has referenced?
So moved.
I'll second that.
McCollums?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Chris, thank you very much. Job well done.
We'll miss our time together on...
Well, let's see, we've done, we've done a courthouse. We've done this. Now, we'll, we'll get together and think about what's next.
Perfect. I was extremely forward to the next management process.
Thank you. Very good. Updates? Steve?
Well, I have a Cedar Creek Waters had a meeting tomorrow. I heard a meeting Thursday, but they're going to be Zoom.
Very good. Well, glad to see you here though.
I'm feeling dry in there.
Very glad to see you here though. All right. Keisha?
I have that judicial tomorrow and also impact on Thursday. Other than that?
All right, very good. Hope you get to feeling better here soon. Nothing, well, only thing for me is we've got, actually have a hearing coming up for public health with the state, with an administrative law judge, as you know. And Kim has updated on this regarding our WIC competitive grant that was awarded to, preliminarily to a group out of a tamwa, which would change materially our structure within public health. So Kim and myself and Ed Bull, in the middle of August, will be appealing that live and in person with the state, along with a few other things we'll be doing with that. Mental health, still working on some changes to the region. It's been well received by the cross-board. Rachel's been doing a wonderful job working on benefits. I know Lisa, she's been working with you on structuring the benefit programs. And so we've gone a long way down that road. We're not quite to final state yet. But Rachel and, and we'll keep you updated on that as we get closer to finalizing what that's going to look like. I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think motion to adjourn.
Okay.
McCollums?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Get better.